All right. Mr. Ritzman, if you want to settle in. Ed got called into immediately. I'll explain it just a second. Yes, we're just the three of us. We've got a quorum.
All righty. Looking forward to it.
All right, settle in, Mr. Ritzman. Troublemaker. All right. Six o'clock, Wednesday, February 5th. Want to call the Subby School District meeting in the SCES library to order. We do a quick roll call to order for anybody watching at home. We have two school board members out. Ed Anderson is police chief, had to do police chief duties in London tonight. And Andy Nichols is at a work conference far away from New Hampshire. Three of us make a quorum, so we can go ahead with the meeting, but that's why the other two are not here. You want to go from this side?
Sure.
Jesse Tyler, school board. Come on, Scott.
Scott, what's your school board?
Carrie Hoopaw, school board. Lizzie Nichols, student body rep.
Thank you for all call. Let's stand for a pleasant legion.
I by the way. To apply, okay, and as for and to the.
Thank you. Looking for motion to approve the school board meeting minutes from January 15th, 2020. I can jump in on this, but the three of us, it tends to go, one does the motions and one does the seconds. But whatever you guys want to go and mix it up, that's fine as well. As long as we follow process, I'm thrilled. Do I have a motion?
Do you have a motion to approve the medics of the school board meeting, January 15th?
Excellent. Okay.
I will second.
Seconded by Carrie. I was taking a wild guess as if that was coming. Any discussion, correction, commentary? Nope, I probably say this every time, but we are graced with very good notes. Tried to find something this time and I couldn't find anything, even just to be a rascal. Very good notes, there's a lot covered, it's like eight pages. Thank you for that. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from the January 15th board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous, all right, second. Looking for a meeting, motion to approve the minutes of the January 15th bond and budget hearings. Carrie, you got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 15th, 2020, bond and budget hearings.
Do you get a second?
I'll second Carrie's motion.
All right, seconded for discussion. It was a four-hour marathon, for anybody who did not watch this at home or attend, it was actually slightly over four hours. It was called the four-hour tour. Lot of great discussion with community, a lot of big open questions and back and forth. It was, in my view, was awesome, just to have that much before, get that all out there and everybody. Some minor yelling and name-calling, but it stayed civil overall as an average. Any kind of comments beyond my commentary? Corrections, anything?
No.
Again, multiple pages of notes, very well done. All in favor of approving the minutes from the January 15th bond and budget hearings, please say aye.
Aye.
Hand wave for the folks at home, thank you very much. Gender review.
Do you have any information I have? I'm just going to share with you, I've got a run-up for some of the elementary school principals. It's not too above.
Awesome. Thank you. Somebody asked me about that this week, I forgot who. I don't have anything to add, anything? Okay, we're good. Public forum. Seeing no public. We had it, they didn't come to have it. Moving on to school updates, student rep.
So.
Nichols.
The service club right now is playing another blood drive and also clothing drive. The theater department is rehearsing and getting ready for Translmania. Basketball is mid-season and they have senior nights coming up. NHS is planning a father-daughter dance and trying to brainstorm ideas for a spring service club. The Go Green Club is planning a fundraiser so that they can buy metal silverware for the cafeteria instead of plastic. And the outing club with Mr. Coverdale is doing a hike next Friday, he's thinking that's going to be Chikora. And senior class playing a dodgeball tournament as a fundraiser. The junior class is hardworking at planning prom. Our ski teams, Nordic had a meet yesterday, his jump team has a meet at Hanover as we speak. States are next Thursday for them, also in Hanover. Alpine has a meet on Friday at King Pine. The girls states are next Tuesday at Sunapee. Boys states are next Wednesday at Cannon. AP Language just went and saw a play yesterday. And the band and chorus are preparing for an upcoming concert. And students, we have mixed emotions about the possible snow days this week.
Yeah.
Senior is not so happy because it would move graduation probably, but younger kids more excited.
The girls play Sherburne Friday if there's no snow day, right? Maybe you said that, I was thinking there was a game, boys or girls?
Boys.
Boys, okay, I wasn't sure. I thought there was a game there that would be affected as well by the snow day.
Yeah, and then the ski meet would also be affected.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, you do a good job with the updates.
Thank you.
I like watching one hand's face as you get farther and farther. Prior student reps have also made a quorum, which is greatly enjoyable to the rest of us. Keeping that trend alive, that tradition, so thank you. Update from the elementary school, please.
We had our qualifier for the spelling bee last Wednesday. We have about fifteen fourth and fifth grade spellers, and Ben Russell in fourth grade was the winner.
Nice.
And the runner-up was Sarah Lee in fifth grade. We also last week participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, which not only recognized acts of kindness within the school community, but we also participated in a unifying service project. Kindness for koalas, which supported the flyers Australian Wildlife Rescue. Students donated their loose change, and we also had merchandise for sale, so we had stickers and water bottles and T-shirts. And the logo was designed by Mrs. Mae Blais, one of our staff members. And our students raised thirteen hundred two dollars and thirty-four cents for the wildlife rescue.
Yeah.
And we wanted to thank Jenny and Amy because they sponsored the T-shirts.
Nice.
We've got a lot of illness going around, but this is a motion, our school nurse tells us we're on the upswing because we had under thirty out today. And she sent less than five homes, so we think we're getting better. This Roy's and his crew has been doing a really good job of sanitizing every night, so hopefully everyone's getting well. We're wrapping up winter activities, we have a couple of weeks left, but then we're getting ready for spring class. So we're, as always, putting a word out that any adult community member who has a skill or talent they'd like to share, we would love to have them leave. A clock after school, Tuesdays, five weeks starting March 10th and the April 7th.
That's great. Yeah, the school postings of the generosity week or whatever it was, Karen week was. Kindness week, oh, eventually got there, thank you. They're very sweet, you know, just to see the engagement and all the kids and the faces, and so it's just neat to see. All the other things we have to talk about right now, it was just really pleasant to see how much they got into it and how much money they raised, it was pretty cool, a bunch of youngsters. Middle high school.
And there's still, we've been losing very thorough account, we saw some more things that I'll add to this. We too had our qualifying for the Sunday, hence Sarah's older brother, Mike, and I scored one in the middle school county. And we's row one on our geography D. We, as a staff, have been working on a couple of things, we've been working on revising our school-wide rubrics. So we look at the vision of the graduate, look at the components and how we're assessing student progress for the vision of the graduate. And so we have committees who looked at rubrics that already existed and then rewrote, we gathered feedback, and we'll vote on those as a staff in two weeks. Hopefully have those in place for the rest of the second semester. We also had a professional development day. During that day, we worked on more opportunities for student-centered learning, to develop flexible thinking and personal endurance with students. So looking for problem-solving oriented instructionists and did a lot of work with that that day. We've gone through our midterm exams and we're into the second semester, which is unbelievable. And upcoming events, I'll just give a little more detail on the Go Green event, in case anybody's listening from home, but it's a babysitting night next Friday night. And it runs from six to nine, parents can drop off their kids, they'll get dinner, babysitting, fifteen dollars of child.
Nice.
And hoping to help the Go Green Club make this conversion of our activity. So for about six years, we've been using plastic everything and making that change over is very exciting. And that has been part of Ellie Frederick's senior project, doing the Go Green Club and that conversion, so we're really proud of that. And book club is going to meet on Friday night, hopefully. And we'll have a high school dance on Friday, and we postponed a middle school dance and our teacher will be.
Okay. What hours for the high school dance?
The high school dance is actually going to go eight-thirty to eleven, given the boys meeting and book club.
Lot going on.
Plenty to do this Friday night.
Sounds like it. All right, thank you very much. John, you are the public. You bear a great responsibility tonight. Superintendent's update, please.
Thank you, we had the tunnel line training where some folks from the district received that training through administrators, two dance counselors, our choicers, excuse me, adjustment counselor and myself, with an attorney from Trump Woodson, really went through a pretty thorough look at tunnel line harassment, sexual harassment, sexual harassment, and the ability to report, to sort of identify, to do the interviews and sort of the process that goes with our policies. And so it was really timely training. We've been very fortunate, not had much at all, but it is something that has hit a lot of districts across our state, across our country, and just felt it was time for us to be a little bit fresher on that training, so. That took place last week. Doing a lot of prep, obviously, for the deliberative session, and we're currently, right now, working on what the next two days look like. We definitely have some weather coming in, and we are potentially looking at a early dismissal tomorrow, so between now and the time we leave it, that I have that decision to make.
Okay. Quite a mess.
It's really.
Coming. But we'll stay optimistic that the super Friday night is still going to happen.
Yes.
Everybody. One day at a time, right? Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Policy. Second reading, mister. Want to talk us through those?
Second reading, and those policy updates have been posted on the website for the last month and will continue to be posted. There's three policies that are getting tweaked due to legislative mandates. The advanced coursework, advanced placement policy, tenth graders now, as well as eleventh and twelfth graders are able to participate. We are now going to be doing four versus two emergency drills a year with the crisis prevention policy. The tobacco use policy has been tweaked, or I should say clarified, to now include vaping, e-cigarettes, and liquid nicotine products. And here, coming up in the next couple of months with the new board, we're going to be receiving a plan. The fourth policy is a totally new policy addressing suicide prevention, and I believe, Russ, we're going to be getting a plan in the next couple of months.
We, by statute, we can present the plans by day.
By day.
To a board for, not approval, but just for review.
Just for review, okay. So that's coming up, that'll be on the docket for the new board here in a couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Action items. We have the twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped in ahead here. Motion to accept the second reading of the policies as listed.
I will make a motion to approve the second reading of the policies as listed.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? No, something this board, I think you guys are doing a really good job with, really tight on the policy, which is beyond that and safe education space, it's kind of what we're here for. So thank you for that. All in favor of accepting the second reading as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous, thank you. We need to look at the 2020-2021 calendar and accept it before we leave. Motion to accept, we'll see if we can get a second for discussion. Motion to approve the proposed 2020-21 school calendar, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 school calendar.
All right.
I will second.
Awesome. Seconded for discussion. So first day of school will be on 31st. The Christmas break is pretty generous, but not quite as generous as this year, a week and a half. And then the February and April breaks fall to predicted times, which is sort of the cadence for families, or what I was looking at when I was getting ready tonight. It looks pretty straightforward and pretty similar to this year's.
So I have one question.
Yes.
So if you look at the August calendar, so we've got the 25th as a teacher work day, 26th and 27th as PD days, and then the Friday would appear as though it's a school day? So I don't know if you just need to fix that.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, that would be 31, right?
Yeah, but 28 is showing.
Well, I think if the 31, if the 31, if the 31st is the first day of school, then you need to move forward the new teacher work day and PD days to be Wednesday through Friday.
What's the 28th Friday?
That's a Friday.
That would just be the day.
Twenty to Friday.
What's that? Is that the way it works?
It'd be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Friday, and then start school on Monday.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's by design.
Okay, okay.
It's a three-day, well, sure, a question.
Got it.
Cool.
Yes, I've heard that, but because the PD days are so planned.
Right.
That's.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Well?
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, good question, good ask. Anything, Mr. Ritzman? All right. All in favor of approving the 2020-21 calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Many families are going to want to, right away, spend those summer trips. Motion to accept the proposed retirement of the middle high school teacher nurse, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed retirement of the middle high school teacher nurse.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thanks. The one of you want to read the letter, it's sort of our ritual and respect and thanks, if not, I will read it. Neither of your motion, I'll go there if you want. You want to do it?
Yep. All right, September 17th, 2019. Dear Mr. Holden, this letter serves to inform you of my intent to retire from my position as school nurse slash teacher of Sunapee Middle High School, effective at the end of the 2020-2021 school year. I've had the pleasure of working in what I consider to be the best school district in the state. As school nurse, I've gotten to know more than a thousand students over the course of what will be a 20-year career. I take pride in working with a great group of people who truly value education and recognize value in each and every student. I appreciate and thank you for the opportunity, I have to continue to be a part of the SMHS community or family. Sincerely, Joyce Murphy-Gill.
Very nice. Pasi exit. Pasi person has been a great resource to families and students for 20 years, so we're very thankful for her service and care of our children and support of the rest of the staff. So, thank you very much. You read it. All in favor of accepting the proposed retirement of SMSH teacher nurse, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, respectfully and fondly, wish her the absolute best and adventures, I'm sure, she's chomping at the bit to get started already. Moving on to informational items, deliberative session review. Thoughts? Want to kick it off? Very well attended, I didn't count heads, but probably five or six times as many as were at the town deliberative last night. I thought it was healthy discussion, challenge, questions. It's one of my favorite nights of the year, it's democracy is alive and well in small towns, sometimes hard to tell on a national scale in a national election year. So I thought we were able to, I got feedback, Andy had gotten feedback, we were able to effectively answer a lot of the questions. So I thought it was, I thought we served the community effectively collectively and by dividing up what was covered and just hanging in there and inviting more questions and dialogue. And I thought different opinions were navigated respectfully by everybody there, so I thought it was a good night for Sunapee. Other thoughts?
It was, it was good to see so many people come out. And a lot of with that, I think we heard, I mean, there were some people that, you know, I haven't heard before, there were some fresh voices, so that's always a real positive thing.
Yeah.
To hear these new voices speak up, so I thought that was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I don't know that I have anything different to add. I was pleased that the interactions were respectful, because there's a lot of very, you know, different opinions on all of this. And so I was really happy to see that people were very diplomatic.
Yeah.
In their approach. Same thing, I was happy to see a lot of new faces too, it would have been nice to see some of those earlier.
Yes.
But, you know, we're at least seeing them now, so I think it was, it went well.
Yeah. And hopefully we'll see some more Monday. We've scheduled initially two, one hour that have both gone an hour and a half. Informal, no meetings without the constraints of all of the meeting structure at the library. We've had the 10 or 11 at the first one, 19 at the second, so we have three more scheduled the next one's Monday. So I'm hoping more of those folks that just are new to it, whatever their opinion is, will come and just ask so we can have that dialogue, so.
And I've heard really good feedback on those. I think it's a comfortable setting for people who aren't comfortable getting up in front of large crowds. And I think you're getting, you know, people who are on the fence, people who are definitive one way or the other, but everybody's coming with the right intent to get more information and be informed, which is good.
Yeah, that was, that was our intent. It's hard, even if you feel passionately about something, it's hard, it's hard for most healthy adults to get up in front of a room and say anything. Let alone when there's an increasing tension around the taxes and the future and everything else, so. Hopefully people will take advantage of that and we can keep having those discussions that are hopefully helping people make an informed decision. Health savings. We have the forum on March 5th, yeah, we'll do a quick review of those before we wrap up tonight. Do you want to, do you want to walk us through this? It's kind of a neat story.
So we spoke of this last month, when we were talking about overall looking at the budget. Understanding that we may have, just did not have a dramatic impact or any impact really on our current 21, 2021 budget that was just proposed, the folks will be voting on in March. What this does give you is sort of the effect that the negotiations had last year going into this year. And so the negotiation allowed our teachers to buy back their health insurance at the percentage of what they bought in, so currently they buy in at 20%. We pay out or bought out and gave them back 20% if they decided not to pay the plan. And so you can see sort of the people that, not the individuals, but what people did. On a family plan, if you were buying, if you were getting the buyout, you would receive fifty-six hundred seventy-seven dollars, saving the district twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. So we had, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 13 people take that out of our teachers for our contract. We offered that as well to our support staff, and you can see that we saved some substantial money by doing this. Reason why we did not take this money directly and put it and say, well, let's reduce our budget for the next year. A lot of these people going off on our health insurance plan for the first time. And they have the right to come back on, and not knowing where people were going to fall because of when we put the budget together. It didn't feel like we had enough history to say, hey, we have 15 people that go over here, out of the 15, we typically get five back, let's look at reducing the budget by 10 instead of 15. So this kind of is just a historical for us to start looking at.
Yeah.
But the overall savings for the district issue was $377,000 through the negotiation process and health insurance, which I think was a great thing to negotiate, I thought. It was great for both sides, and it has a substantial savings for the district. Hopefully we'll continue that. Like I said, people are trying new health, health plans for the first time, so giving them that opportunity to experience that.
Yeah, it's significant savings.
Is this, it's a yearly election? People opt in and opt out yearly? So come next December, when we're sitting at the budget meeting, we should see that savings reflected in the actuals?
So what we'll do is, it's probably in May of this year, we'll send a survey out to folks saying, are you still interested in taking the buyout? We'll do it everybody, or continue it. We'll take that and then we'll offer a, we'll ask for confirmation, usually before July 1st or somewhere in that area. And then we'll calculate that, we'll see the people who stayed on for the second year, we'll see the people who gave due, we'll see the people who gave back. And then, and that gives two years of that to look at to make some conservative adjustments to the budget for the 21-22 school year.
So when we're doing the budget exercise, the fall, we'll have two years' worth of data, so we can incorporate that.
Definitely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if it goes well, if it goes well, we can come back to the taxpayers.
So we just want to make sure not a big number of people swing back.
Right.
Exactly. I mean, the ideal, we were very fortunate this year to get that 1.5 GMR, so our health insurance really didn't even bug a whole lot. You know, this, it's come in at 12%, 14%, 15% for three or four hundred thousand dollars. It would be nice if we get a big hit next year that we can offset that hit, and maybe even more with what we've done with the buyout.
Are health, the health plans evaluated yearly, or is that like the options that you have?
So we have, we have a point of service in HMO, we also have a high deductible plan as well that people are offered to take. If you were on the POS plan and you opted out, you have to go back on if you decide to, only to the HMO. The POS plan is now off limits to you. Or you can go on the, the. We did that for a couple of reasons. Originally, when we were doing the negotiation, we were looking to get the POS plan off the table because it was going to hit the Cadillac tax. Now, last week or two weeks ago, that sort of pulled off the table as well, but it's still a pretty high-cost plan. So this allowed us to, the negotiation process, to drive more people and incoming people to the HMO plan, saving a lot of money for the district.
Do you get many people opting for the high deductible?
Not yet. No, that's what we have.
We see quite a bit, my.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've completely shook that at ours and people are really steered towards that. It's, it makes a huge difference.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so this definitely, hopefully deliver really solid savings. And it's significant, it's 377,000, but if we don't have any swing backs, it's significant for what we have next year, then, again, looking with GMR, hopefully, everybody's happy where we head, the taxpayers are thrilled with what we'll bring back on next year's budget. So that'll be fun to watch. All right, moving forward. Harvard Model Congress and Middle School Ski Championship extended field trips.
So this means you wear my policy that you show early trips that will be staying overnight, and middle school ski teams to be the champion, and I have a model congress going down to Boston.
Yep.
I can wear my policy with me, continue now?
Yes, thank you, meets policy. Any questions or comments from the game? Okay. You had a job. For Lizzie.
So just quickly, what I've decided to do is post this ad, we'll post this internally next week, and it'll be out in the jobs and in the papers and things. And we're listing it as an anticipated opening. We do that to give ourselves some flexibility, not quite knowing what is going to happen in March. Might determine what direction we go in as we do look at an interim, we look at this on a principal, it's accepted right in. And giving us a little bit of flexibility by using the word anticipated will allow us that flexibility. The timing on this, having looked online and wondered what the school districts are doing, puts us in the game with everybody else as far as our job is out, where everybody else's is. And the closing time is in that exact same period of the March 13th, 15th. So, and just, so if you saw it in the papers and what we've anticipated, what does that mean? It's to give us that flexibility pending the opening of the vote.
Yep.
I guess.
Somebody just asked me about that the other day.
I was just going to ask how the interview process differs typically, you know, for a principal versus other staff.
Sure, we got this, a principal, we'll do his output, committee together, the administration, teachers, and probably a boardroom, and maybe even a PTO member. And we'll have a committee, we'll put, we'll have several hours where we bring in, do some initial screenings of folks, down, work down, and then probably bring people back from second round. We may choose to house, do some site visits as well, if we really feel like we want to get out, if we don't feel like we have our pack on, or if we're interested, if somebody can maybe review, or live in a different part of the state. a little bit of different part of the state, a little bit of different state, we'd be willing to site visit.
That's how we did it when I was on board every month. It's great to get the different, the cross-section actively involved, give their, just different perspective and questions. So that's great. Any questions about that? All right, good to remember who asked me that, so I can go back and do a little of those specifics. All right. We're looking for manifests to do this properly. One for both APs and then second, and then another round for the payrolls. Are you ready to go? Who wants to do the first one? I'll do it.
You'll do it.
You'll do it?
Okay.
I'll do it. I'll do the first one. Make a motion to approve the AP manifest 2020-13 for one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. And manifest 2020-14 for seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second your motion, Jesse.
Scott gets in quick with a second. Any discussion? Things we do between board meetings. All in favor of approving AP manifests 2020-13 and 2020-14, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, somebody throw out a motion for the payroll, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll manifest 2020-14 in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Straight forward. All in favor of approving payroll manifest 2020-14, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Public forum. The whole room's looking at you, John.
Nothing for the vote, nothing for the votes, no.
Okay, another day. Thank you. Agenda items for next meeting.
You have a presentation from John Reed and I think Boyle on virtual reality software that we're going to use, we're going to be using.
Okay.
Is that the March meeting or the April meeting?
No, she wants to, they want to make.
Well, I didn't know if you were having a presentation for the March meeting because it's a new, it's a new member.
They did ask for you, but I didn't say that. Was that just because of the board? Do you think there was a time? I'll do that, John, but there may be a presentation.
I'm trying to remember. We have...
When is the March meeting?
The 11th.
The 11th.
It is, okay.
Yeah, two days after the...
Because we don't meet before the election. So I was thinking it was the 11th, the day after the election.
The election's over.
Let me just make sure I have it on the calendar. I'll add that. Everyone can just wait a second because I can't do this and talk at one time. We're gonna stick with 6 o'clock. 11th, great. Yeah, this year, the 6 o'clock worked better. The new board can decide on the 11th, but I think it worked a lot better. It's easier for people to come, it's easier for me to get here, but I think it's easier for some of the public that attends to get here, but it's a little bit later. Yeah, board chair and getting the new board.
Just wants the word reorganization.
What committees, who's on, who wants to do what conversation? So think about what you want to do. We didn't have anybody else run, so unless all voters get together and don't vote for Ed and I, you're probably stuck with us for three or more years. So we can have some familiarity as we kick off. But think about if you want to do something different, if somebody wants to be on CIP or policy moving around, we don't have negotiations.
We'll send you all of the committee's figures if you're willing to run and like to change.
Yeah, so think about what you guys want to do. If you're happy continuing, that's good too. We don't have any requests for non-public. So motion to adjourn, 6:32 Wednesday, February 5th.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.